All right, good evening, everybody. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, all right, sorry. I'm not used to the pledge here. Okay, we're supposed to make a motion to reconvene into open session first. Motion, this is my second, uh, to be the all favor four zero. Now you may rise to the Pledge of Allegiance. And please stand for a moment of silence honoring one of Elwood's, um, yeah, after the pledge, one of Elwood's former administrators. Thank you. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please stay standing for a moment of silence for a retiree, Arthur Strassel, Jr., who passed away on February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Strassel was an administrator, a principal with the district and retired in June of nineteen ninety-five. He resided in Wisconsin, New York. Um, he was an English teacher and a socialized teacher in nineteen sixty-one. He became an assistant principal in the junior high in nineteen seventy, and then at Manor Plains in nineteen seventy-five, which was the elementary school. And he then became the junior high principal in nineteen eighty-four and retired in nineteen ninety-five. If we could just stay standing for a moment of silence for him. Thank you. Now I don't mess up the budget. This is easy from here. Lorraine, we're up to you for the budget presentation. That's it, yeah, it's an easy one.
It's a workshop. Um, as Lorraine makes her way to the podium, I do want to thank the Board of Education for the continued opportunity to have open and public discussions about our budget development. The Board is well aware that the process began some months ago, but began our public conversations a bit earlier this year. We want to maximize the time the Board has for open discussions, inquiries, questions, concerns about where we are in the process. We're not looking for any specific Board action tonight. We're looking for your continued guidance and input about where the administration is in the budget development process. If there's anything that is shared with you tonight that you have strong feelings about positively or negatively, that's the feedback we're looking for. If there is any information that you are seeking that we have not yet presented to you, we are looking for that, so we can provide it at the next meeting. And if there is any questions about anything that's presented tonight, this workshop forum is the perfect opportunity to bring clarity to where we are in the process. I thank Ms. Dunkel and her team for getting us to the point in the process where we're beginning to see some clarity in what next year looks like. While there are still many unknowns, the vision is becoming clearer of the economic challenges we face in our efforts to preserve a program of excellence for our students. Did I speak long enough, Ms. Dunkel?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Good evening to the Board, good evening to the community. Thank you for allowing me to continue to present the budget that we're working on. Okay, so, um, this slide, you've seen this slide before. It just illustrates our goals and priorities to remind you of the approach that we are taking when building the budget. It lists goals and priorities of both administration and the Board of Education. This slide just represents the discussion topics for this evening. I will review state aid, our tax cap calculation, our total revenue, and our estimated expenditures as of today. Our preliminary state aid budget was received on February fourteenth, and that is the information that comes out from the Governor's proposed budget. Elwood's projected increase to state aid is currently one point eight three million dollars. And just to highlight some of the items that are in the Governor's budget and some of the new requirements, foundation aid has been fully funded based on, based on our inflation increase. However, within the Governor's proposal, there is a set aside limit, meaning that a portion of the foundation aid that we're going to receive must be spent on tutoring. So our set aside amount is roughly a hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. Again, right now, this is a current proposal in the Governor's budget, but it has not yet been approved. And our budget is anticipated to be approved and released on time on April first. Another item that's in the Governor's proposed budget is the additional funding for UPK. I spoke about this at the last budget meeting. Our current UPK allotment is forty seats. With the increase that we're set to receive, we will be able to, um, fund UPK seats up to seventy-seven students instead of forty. So we're very pleased with that outcome. This slide represents, my glasses, uh, the initial state aid comparison. Does the light work? Yeah, I don't know why. The light is not working on the little pointer here. It just breaks down each category of the state aid. We have foundation aid, BOSI's aid, high cost excess, both public and private, our transportation aid, building aid, and our high tax aid. So each of these categories, you can see, are broke down. The highest increase we're set to receive is in the foundation aid, and our total increase, as I mentioned before, is roughly one point eight million dollars. Again, these numbers may fluctuate depending on the Governor's proposal, but we do expect to receive updates by April first. In the past, our state aid usually fluctuates somewhere around fifty thousand. Sometimes it increases, sometimes it decreases, but we're hoping that this does not fluctuate too much. Our tax levy projections for this year. So as we discussed in previous meetings, we're still waiting for our final building aid and debt service figures. This both, this plays a piece of our tax levy cap as far as our capital exclusion. So, um, as of today, the current tax levy cap or limit is estimated at two point three one three percent. Based on previous conversations at the last board meeting, the Board of Education had consensus and directed administration to build the budget at two percent, which is an increase of roughly one million twenty-one thousand dollars. The two point three one three increase would be an additional hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, just so you're aware of that as well. This is the total revenue picture. Our first category we speak to is our tax levy, which is roughly fifty-two million dollars, and that's with, that's building the cap at, building the levy at two percent. Our state aid figures, which we did discuss, is roughly sixteen million dollars total. We have a pilot, which is a payment in lieu of taxes from a private business that was brought into the community many years ago. Our allocation from reserves, we're looking, or we're recommending an increase of twenty-five thousand dollars at this point. Our fund balance allocation, we're initially holding steady at one point five million dollars. And our other, which is our miscellaneous category, that's money that we receive, um, from use of facilities for outside organizations. They pay small fees to use, um, the grounds and the buildings for the district. That has to do with, um, sometimes we receive refunds from prior year's expenses. Also in that category is any interest that we earn in our bank accounts, so that's a, that's a small portion, small portion of the overall revenue. But as you can see, our total revenue is seventy-one million, seven hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars. This slide here is a graphic that breaks down our levy. As you can see, it's a pie chart. I thought this was important for the Board to understand how our levy, how, excuse me, how our revenue is distributed. So as you can see, the largest piece of this pie, the fifty-two million dollars, is our tax levy. Our state aid is roughly sixteen point seven million dollars. So our levy represents thirty-three, excuse me, seventy-three percent of our overall revenue, where our state aid is probably about twenty percent. So Elwood is, being a small district, it's, it's not unique, but in our district, you know, dissimilar to, I'll use Northport as an example, Northport has the power plant there. They, they receive much of their revenue, part of their tax levy is paid by the power plant, Leipen, whatever you want to call it these days. Um, in, in Elwood, we don't have any real commercial property that helps, that offsets the individual taxpayers or homeowners levy. So again, I just thought it was important for the Board and the community to understand that our total revenue of seventy-one million, fifty-three of that is coming directly from the taxpayers. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of resources to obtain additional revenue from outside of the levy and our state aid. This slide is representing the current estimated expenditure budget. Shows general support, the categories we've spoken about in the past, instruction, transportation, benefits, debt service, those items. Um, as you can see, the highest increase is in our instruction line, which, again, I mean, every, every category we have within the budget deals directly with students, but the instruction line deals directly with anything that's taking place within the building, all of them. Anything associated with the teachers, materials, supplies, anything directly associated with classroom, as well as the supervision, the principal's office, things like that. And just to put in, into context, as far as our increases are concerned, if you take the increase of our transportation, instruction, and benefits, those three categories combined exceed our increase to the levy. So I just, it's just something I just want you to have, you know, kind of an understanding of. You know, having such limited resources for increases, you know, restricts us, as I just wanted you to understand that. So based on this slide, as you can see, our estimated expenditures are seventy-two million, seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Included in that, included in our expenditure budget are these, the top half of this slide, which shows the five checks mark, five check marks. Those items have been included in the current budget. The items below that are not currently included in the proposed budget. Um, just to highlight some of the items, we spoke about addition, additional, a section of ICT, bringing students into kindergarten, an additional special ed staff, an additional point four fax to allow for additional child development class at the high school, as well as career, I can't read that, sorry, career coordination. So these are some of the items that Dr. Bossert and administration have been speaking about the last few board meetings. It's important, some of these are supported by other funds or grants at this point. We wanted to, we want to continue them, so we've included them in the current proposed budget.
If I could just quickly comment on that, and, and this is part of the workshop forum that we're hoping to gain some feedback on. You notice the green check marks in these slides as items that add expense to the budget that is within the administrative proposal at this time. And then there are items not currently included. And one of the things we are looking for from the Board is any guidance you may have on those items that you feel are non-negotiables, that you would like to see included in our next proposal. Obviously, Ms. Dunkel will talk about some of our shortcomings in revenue, so those shortcomings are expanded when we add any additional items, but we are seeking guidance from the Board on any of these items that you feel are non-negotiable in nature.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, um, this slide kind of brings summary to the previous slide that I've been discussing. So our projected revenue at a tax cap of two percent is roughly seventy-one point seven million. Our projected expenses are at seventy-two point seven million dollars. So, um, as you can see, the budget is not balanced. We have a deficit of roughly nine hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. So, um, this is where the Board and administration continue to work together to make decisions on how to approach that deficit and options we have. So when we, typically when we talk about making adjustments, one of the options we talk about is possibly reducing program. At this point, that's not something we are looking to do, but again, this is something the Board will have to discuss. One adjustment that will be made is our, has to deal with our building aid. Based on the projections that have been coming out, and again, nothing has been finalized, we are expecting to receive roughly three hundred and fifty thousand dollars additional in state aid, which is helpful. Um, and in order to eliminate the remaining deficit, which would be another roughly six hundred thousand dollars, we have the option of utilizing additional reserves. We can also increase our fund balance allocation. Or we also have the option of going to the tax cap levy at this point, which is two point three one three, instead of two percent, which would allow for an additional hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. So this is, again, we're looking for feedback from the Board tonight regarding this. No, you know, we're not looking for a vote or a final decision, but to have discussions about it would be helpful, so we can continue building the budget. And the last piece I want to speak about is our capital reserve. This is outside of the budget. In two thousand and eighteen, the community approved the establishment of a capital reserve for enhancements having to do with capital projects and infrastructure. It's, it's outside of the bond. It's a, it's a, I will call it a somewhat of a savings account for capital projects and a capital reserve. So the community approved the establishment of that reserve, and year to date, we've funded it for roughly one point five million dollars. In order to spend from the reserve, we need community approval. So we would, we're recommending to put this up as a second proposition with, along with the budget vote in May. Um, and again, it's, it's part of our continued efforts to improve upon our infrastructure. Some of the items we're specifically targeting have to deal directly with security as we continue to enhance security, both internally and externally. We still need to purchase a secondary security vehicle. We have, currently have two Jeeps. One is not working. Um, we do, on occasion, borrow or rent, I should say, a security vehicle directly from our security company. It just costs us more money. Additionally, Mr. McDonald, our facilities director, has been looking into improving upon our intercom system at our elementary buildings. The intercom, the intercom systems, the way they're working today, they're, they're not able to support the needs today. It wasn't designed, the way the intercom systems were designed fifty, sixty years ago do not support the way, the needs of the building at this time. From my understanding, the building principals and the staff members look to be able to speak to each other from classroom to classroom, where the intercom systems that are in place now typically are from the main office to a classroom. So that's just, and, and they're aging out anyway. There's no support for them any longer. We've done patchwork to fix them, but since we do have a capital reserve, it's something that's important to the principals and the infrastructure, so we're looking to possibly list that as an item to spend out of the capital reserve. The vote for the capital reserve is the same as the budget vote. It's a separate proposition. It's a simple majority, which means we need fifty plus one in order for it to pass, and it's important to the Board and for the community to understand that there are no additional taxes related to the capital reserve. That money is already set aside in our reserve. So if we were to pass the proposition to have the additional funds of five hundred thousand dollars, that is completely outside of the tax levy. So there's no additional taxes being put on in that place.
If I may, Ms., yeah, if I may, I wanted to have complete clarity for myself in engaging this conversation with the Board. In, in simple terms, this is money we've already saved and is within a reserve, an account. In order to spend it, we need the community to approve the way the money is spent. But to make sure we achieved complete clarity, my question of counsel was, do we need to inform the community of almost online item of expenditures to say we're going to spend three hundred thousand dollars on enhancing our video equipment, a hundred thousand dollars on a vehicle, a hundred thousand dollars on intercom system? The response from counsel was no, that you propose to the community that you plan to spend hypothetically five hundred thousand dollars on security enhancements, and then public discussions like this give more detail about what would be included in that expense. But the proposition to the community, as it would read on the ballot, would be a simple resolution as the community is authorizing the Board of Education to spend five hundred thousand from the capital reserve for the purpose of security enhancements.
That concludes my presentation on the workshop for tonight. Any questions, comments?
Thank you, Ms. Dunkel. Any questions from the Board? Dr. Sodiki?
Thank you, Ms. Dunkel. That was a great presentation, as always. I did have a question on one of the balances. I think it was the interfund balance that was, right, twenty-two, twenty-three approved budget was one ninety-five, and then twenty-three, twenty-four estimated was up to six sixty. What, what is the interfund balance?
So the interfund transfer allows us to move money from our general fund budget, which is the budget we're speaking about, into other funds. Each year, we, and we do have a small line item for that. Each year, we allow, we have an allotment in both the federal fund and the school lunch fund for, for that purpose, and I'll explain why. The school lunch fund, the end, the end of each year, if there's ever a deficit in the school lunch fund, by law, the, the general fund is required to pay off that or balance that deficit. So if the school lunch fund ends up in a deficit of, let's say, two hundred thousand dollars, the general fund has to cover that deficit. So we have to transfer the money at the end of the year into the school lunch fund. We haven't had that issue the past few years, but we do keep a small balance. The only concern we have is that with the proposal for free lunch to go away, the, the.
Healthy meals for all.
Yeah, healthy meals for all, thank you. If they are, if they are to eliminate that, we do have, we do have, we have now students who have very large balances that they cannot pay, and we cannot force them to pay. You know, we send out reminders, and Mrs. Pugh, the director of school lunch, does work with the families, and we work with social workers to try to obtain any money that we can. But we do have, right now, we have a, we have about a twenty thousand dollar deficit for unpaid balances. We still have to pay that. Even if the school lunch itself program is in a surplus, this general fund still has to pay off that deficit. We can't use other monies from the school lunch fund to pay that deficit. The school lunch fund, the general fund still has to pay off that deficit. So there's a slight increase to the school lunch projection in the interfund transfer. The federal portion of the interfund transfer is typically deals with our. The federal portion of the interfund transfer is typically deals with our summer school program and some of the federal programs related to our special ed students. New York State, on average, gives about, gives about 80% back to the school district in state aid. The general fund has to make up the 20% difference. And lastly, this year, we're looking to add to the interfund transfer line for capital reasons. So it will allow us to pay for some smaller capital projects that may not be covered by the bond or other projects that, you know, we can get done, that were not included in the bond. So that's why that line item, you see that increase in that dollar amount there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Ms. Dunkle, thank you so much for your presentation and being on top of all this number stuff. I really appreciate it. Is it typical, you know, the instruction budget, you know, is going up 1.4 million, is that typical every year? I don't remember the numbers from last hand, last year.
I would, I would say the percentage is probably typical as, as our contractual obligations increase that, so like, so last year may have been maybe a million or 1.2 million. I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay.
I could go back and look at it. But I would say the percentage is fairly the same.
Okay.
It's the largest part of our budget, so, you know, dealing with all the teaching staff and-
Right, I just noticed that was typical.
Yep.
I don't remember from last year. Now, I see that we talked about the potential addition of the ICT UPK. So I just want to make sure everyone understands. So the UPK money we get for those 72 or 77 seats, that does not come out of our budget. That's given to us by the state?
Correct, that's fully funded by the state.
Now, does the state, is the state gonna fully, will they fund the ICT UPK, UPK class?
No.
No.
And why won't they fund that?
It, it's, right now, it's not covered under the universal pre-K program. Again, we are looking to, you know, through grants, we're looking to allocate or obtain additional funds for UPK program, but right now, it's not something that the state directly supports.
And how many incoming students, you know, would benefit from having the ICT UPK? I know it's hard to tell now because they haven't released-
Well, right now, Mrs. Scrola, we're in the fortunate position of all of our classified students have found placements within county-funded, community-based organizations.
Okay.
We are concerned that a day will come where that will not be the case, and the only way to ensure a seat for every student will be to house a program of our own. We're not making that recommendation for the next year because we're not yet in a position where we have that concern of students failing to be placed. And we're looking for legislation to change that will allow grant funding to be used to support a district program. Right now, if we were to have a district program for pre-K and ICT or otherwise, it would have to be part of the general budget.
But you don't feel the need for it next year?
Mrs. Kelly Gorman anticipates we'll be able to place each of our students. What we are looking to expand, however, is ICT at the kindergarten level, so the preschoolers coming in will all have the appropriate placement within the district.
Okay. No, I, I'm a big believer of pre-K. I want to make sure that all of our students are taken care of. Also, I see that you're not thinking about going with additional business and coding electives. And I just want to say in my own opinion that I think those are important electives, especially, you know, with our economy and pretty much kids, I think, should leave Elwood with some finance and computer knowledge so they can compete in a global economy. So that's just my own personal opinion on that.
Mary, respond?
Yes.
Breaking news as of today, I had a conversation with Mr. McNamara, and course requests are coming in, and based upon the course request from students, it looks like we will be able to increase the number of business electives taught by our business teacher.
Okay. I do think, like I said, I think we have a lot of academic rigor, but I think it's really important that we give every opportunity to all students to have some financial literacy, and, you know, coding is something that's growing, and they're high-paying jobs, so that's something hopefully we might see maybe put back in the budget if possible. And then my other question is, when you made the budget, you said there's a chance we might be able to get $350,000 back in building aid?
Correct.
Is, was that number put into the budget, or that number has not been put into the budget yet? Because you're not 100% sure.
It is not in the budget right now.
Okay, so the budget you proposed tonight, there could be a potential increase of $350,000 at-
Let me bring clarity to that. Right now, our budget expenses outweigh our revenues by about $1 million. If we do receive that $350,000 additional building aid, that will reduce our deficit to $650,000.
Okay. And, and with the possible use of the capital reserve, I didn't see it listed, but does that also include updating our security cameras?
Yes, so when we talk about security enhancements, and I know, you know, being part of the safety committee that you are, we, we have, the district with Mr. Tranquino has received a quote from a new camera company, a new security company, but it's not simply just for the cameras. Our cameras do have to be upgraded and replaced, and, I don't want to jump the gun, but based on our recent audit, and Suffolk County Police Department will be speaking to that in the near future. We do have some locations across the campus that need cameras that currently don't have them, but to answer your question, yes, the capital reserve, we're looking to replace the entire camera system, security system, which would include upgrades to our doors, tying in the lockdown and some of our drills into one system instead of piecemealing it through various vendors.
Yeah, as an individual, I do think safety is something that, you know, we need to stay on top of, unfortunately, in the world we're living in.
I agree with you.
Mrs. Scrola, before you change topics, may I comment? I'm very pleased to share with the board and the community that the security audit has been completed of our district, completed by Suffolk County Police Department, Department of Homeland Security. Officers McVeigh, Officer Jinks, their team walked with our team each of the buildings and provided a comprehensive evaluation of each of our school buildings and our operations. They have agreed to attend our next public board meeting on the 16th. I will yield my time during the superintendent's report to the officers to present the overall findings of their audits. Every board member will be provided with a hard copy of the confidential document that they created. Obviously, we can't present that publicly as it contains areas for future focus that we wouldn't want to advertise publicly to people who might seek to do us harm. But within that audit, it helps us to identify specific areas for some of the enhancements you're discussing. There were specific references to areas of the buildings where they felt video surveillance should, video surveillance should be enhanced or replaced. There are specific areas that they felt were exposures we should identify, and I think the audit will help us to determine the best way to expend those funds.
Okay. And then, thank you for that answer. And then last, you talked about the PA systems at the elementary school. Does that mean like the sound system and with like the whole, you know, I think of elementary school, they have the whole board and with all that, that's what you're talking about being replaced?
Yes, it's, it's an outdated system. You know, the, any, any announcements that are made, you know, in some areas of the building, like if you're in the bathroom in some of the buildings, you may not be able to hear the intercom announcement, things like that.
Like if we're in lockdown or something, they can't hear it if possibly-
Well, I, I don't know that specifically, but yeah, typical announcements, and it just, you know, like I said, the, the staff themselves are not able to communicate with one another.
There's no classroom phones in the-
Some of them have phones, some of them do not. That's one of the options we're looking into now, but if we're able to pass this proposition for the capital reserve, we'd be replacing the entirety of the system and wouldn't have a need for those types of phones.
Now, did we get any estimate on cost for these PA systems?
We don't have them yet. We should have them within a couple of weeks.
Okay, all right, thank you. Ms. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. Tomia. Oops, can you hear me? Hi. Thank you, Lorraine, it was a good presentation. I have a couple of questions. The first one is on the, from the state, initial state aid comparison slide. The public high, high excess cost aid, can you explain what that is?
So that aid has to, it deals directly with our high-cost students. So students who attend public school but receive a lot of services.
Okay.
There's a, there's a threshold from New York State. If a, if a school district spends over that threshold, they receive a portion of aid back for those students.
Okay, so that's additional money. I'm sorry, I skipped one, the BOSI's aid. The reason that it is declined from, in the proposed budget from last year, why is that decrease? Have we not seen all our-
It, it's based on our BOSI's expenditures, so-
So because we spent less?
Right, if we're, right, if we're spending less, we would receive back less aid, yes.
Okay, that makes sense. And then, we discussed a little bit about the building aid. I see there's a decrease here.
Right, and that, that, again, that does not include the 350 projected, so I, I do anticipate that number changing, but the, based on the current aids that were, the current aid run that was published by the governor, our aid is declining. But because we have filed final course reports on some of the projects, we do anticipate receiving more.
And just for clarification to the public, the building aid is composed of, like, what kind of things are in the building aid?
It's, it's, it's aid, it's a portion of aid that we're receiving directly from our capital projects, so the bond projects that have been completed, like last year, the John Glenn High School cafeteria, the, thank you, I'm like, I can't think, I didn't want to say what it's called, the Performing Arts Center, so as projects are closed, we file them with New York State, and then we start to receive aid on them. So that's why we're anticipating, again, an increase of at least $350,000.
Okay, that sounds great. And Dr. Siddiqui had asked about the interfund transfers, and so I just wanted to clarify that, that additional amount of 465K is going for the lunch program, the summer school, and to pay for some more capital projects.
Yes, it's a combination of the school lunch fund, the federal fund, and the capital fund.
I guess my question is, you had mentioned that it's money that gets transferred from the general fund, right, into this intra, which is like a holding pattern, and then gets paid out to these programs, correct?
Correct. So, again, using, using the school lunch fund as an example, if at the end of the school year, the school lunch, the students, some stu, again, some students aren't able to afford to pay for their meals, if we have a $20,000 deficit, in order to wipe that deficit out, the general fund has to literally send $20,000 cash through an interfund transfer to the school lunch fund to make that zero.
Okay. So is this, because I'm a little confused, I'm like, I'm thinking if it's in the general fund, it's already in there, then why do we have to put it in this intertransfer?
No, the, the, each, the general fund is completely separate from, each fund has its own, I'll call it pot of money or, you know, balance, and they don't, they don't intertwine unless they have to.
That's what cleared, it's like another reserve savings account. Yeah, escrow, thank you.
Well, it's, it's different, it's not escrow, it's, it's a different, it's, just think of it as a completely different program, like the federal fund, we get money from the federal-
It's not in another line item that you're moving through the intrafund to go to another line item. It's not there. You have to move it out of a, out of a fund to actually put it in the budget.
Correct, it's, it's in, it's in the general fund budget, so we have the-
So that's why, because it kind of confused me, why are you asking for this increase if it's already in the fund, but in the budget, but it's not in the budget at all yet?
Right, that we, I think this year, I don't know the number off the top of my head, it may be 150 or 175,000. We're increasing it because of anticipated costs.
That's what I'm confused about.
Yeah, it's not in the budget, but it's in the general-
It's in the fund.
That's hard, it's-
Right, but it's not on our, it's not on that bottom-line number.
Now, the, the line, like I said, I, I think, looking at, if you look at this year's, I think it's 100, maybe 175 or 225,000. We're looking to increase that because we have anticipated expenses coming from those other funds.
Okay. No, she does a great job. And then, I agree, concur with Mr. Scrola, when you talked about program enhancements, the coding business, like you said, so that's a great thing. And the other thing, and I think Mr. Tomia's going to speak more on, is the investment in the SEAL of civic readiness. I'd like to see that also, if, you know, as those are definites that we're not going to-
May I speak to that for a moment? We estimate that to fully implement the SEAL of civic readiness in the manner in which we think is most conducive to the students would be approximately a .2 or .4 or somewhere in between of a teacher assignment. It would be that person's charge to make students aware and available of community service opportunities, to keep record of the opportunities they're participating in, to count hours, to make sure that they're meeting all the obligations, the application for the SEAL of civic readiness. We're very hopeful to be able to keep that on the table for discussion. I'm happy to hear the board's support for it, and just please keep in mind that every .2, every .4 has a dollar figure associated with it, and we're trying to close the gap between revenue and, and expenses, and adding things in widens the gap. So we, we need to understand that we prioritize all of these opportunities for students. We just have to be very careful about making certain we have a methodology for closing the gap.
Okay, but that 1.4 increase, 1.4 million increase in instruction, are these check marks, correct?
Those are included in that number, but that's, that, those five items aren't worth 1.4 million, no.
4 million, okay, so, so in that instructional component, is there also teacher salaries included in that?
Yes.
Okay, so the increase, their step, or their contractual increases are included?
Yes, all contractual obligations are included in all of the line items. And I, I just wanted to talk, also just, I, I know we spoke about our options as far as increasing the revenue side of the budget, and Dr. Bossa just mentioned it, you know, we're looking to address that. I know, some of the options I spoke to as far as increasing our reserve allocation and our fund balance allocation, that's not something I propose or say lightly. As you all know, you know, we've been working over the last few years to really build up our financial capacity, and, you know, it's, it's important to have reserves and the fund balance allocation for times like this when we do need them. But it's not something we can rely on year after year, so I just think it's part of the discussion going forward. We really have to really take into consideration the long-term planning as far as fund balance allocation and reserves, so I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, no, and I, and I appreciate that. I think, you know, what we're going through right now is a very difficult time financially for a lot of people in our district, and I think, you know, the main objective of our school district is not only to be financially responsible to the taxpayers, but also to provide the best educational opportunity for our kids that leave here, whatever they decide to do. And this is a tight market, I'm sure many of us have seen the news lately, there's a lot of tech companies, a lot of big companies are laying off, and so we want to make sure that, that these students leave here with the skill set. So things like coding and other opportunities that are there, I mean, that's really where the majority of our money, in my feeling, in my, my opinion.
No, I, I agree with you, and I, I think it's important that we're having this dialogue and conversation, because it's important for Dr. Bossa and myself and the rest of the administration to understand, you know, the, the desire of the board and the community.
Yeah, Mrs. Weiss, if I may, and for the board, listen, we have a gap between expenses and revenue, that, that's clear, and we have to use strategies available to us to close the gap, to present a responsible budget to the community that we hope they support as strongly as they have in the past. My philosophy, that I hope is shared by the board, is I don't want to reduce program opportunities for students until it's absolutely necessary to do so. But we do need to keep in mind, as Ms. Dunkle just alluded to, is we are kicking the can a bit. We are putting ourselves in a position where we are going to continue our reliance on fund balance, we're going to appropriate use of reserves, knowing that that is not something we could do in perpetuity. So it is, it is holding off the fiscal cliff that we know is forthcoming unless there is some type of dynamic change within our community or within the way the state funds public schools. But my opinion, that I hope you share, is I don't want to make reductions until we have to make reductions. But these fiscal recommendations don't come easily because we know it is not the best long-term position for the district to be in. And we do understand that decisions of this nature and deficit spending and depleting reserves may change our Moody's rating, may change our standing from the comptroller's office to fiscal distress. We know that, that perhaps not this year, that the recommendations we're making this year, we feel are responsible, or we wouldn't be making them, but we can't continue the same pattern in perpetuity because those funds will be exhausted, and our ratings will be depleted, and we will find ourselves in a difficult position. So either there are additional opportunities for revenue realized, and we've discussed some with the board, or we will have to reduce expenses, which means reducing programs and staffing.
If I just may interject off of Ms. Weiss's comment, I see that we have a .2 career coordinator, I don't know if that's considered work-based learning also. Would they be able to possibly absorb some of those civic readiness, community service outreach to help, you know, get the civic seal out there? Is that something, that's a possibility?
I, I don't want to speak in definitive terms, but the role of the career coordinator is to work with our students who are placed in vocational placements through special education, and I'm not sure at a .2, which is one period a day, they'd be able to absorb the additional responsibilities.
Are you good, Ms. Weiss?
I'm good.
All right, Ms. Weiss, thank you. All right, I'll start off, I guess, right where Ms. Weiss left off. Civic seal, I think the board spoke in limited terms last time that we do want to see that.
Okay.
So I would definitely like to see a budget personally, and I think the board would also like to see that put back in there somehow, and, you know, whether that is, will put us over the 2%, right? So we have to find a spot to massage the numbers through these recommendations that we currently have. And I think, as a directive, as a direction of the board, we kind of have to, are you looking for that tonight? Are you looking to hear what the board is looking for in the budget?
Yes.
Okay, so I think it's important that if you didn't have the opportunity to speak in definitive terms what you want to see in the budget, now would be a good time because we gave- now would be a good time because we gave the directive to be around 2%. They built the budget at 2% with the caveat that we would massage and carve out things as they came up to get to a number that is palatable for the board to present to the community. So hopefully, and if you don't feel that you have that tonight, please let the board know so we can have further dialogue to make sure that you have an understanding of the will of the board.
So I, I guess I, I would like to understand, is the board looking to, I understand the desires of some of the things that we spoke about that the board wants to see included in the budget. But are we looking to hold the 2%? Are we, is it an option to go to 2.3? That, those are the, that's some of the direction I'm looking for.
Okay, well, let's start, I have questions, but let's start there, let's go. So you have your marching orders, I want to make sure that you, we walk away with clear terms tonight.
Yep.
Do any of the board members want to see us exceed 2%?
What are you going to order?
Yeah, Dr. Siddiqui.
Um, I mean, I understand that we are in a difficult position. And I do also want to see some of the items that are not currently included in the proposed budget to be in the budget, particularly the SEAL of Civic Readiness and the business in coding. But I also wanted to see some of the collaborative partnership with Northwell or PM Pediatrics also. So I guess I do want the world in the budget.
We all do.
Um, but I do understand, I mean, we are, you know, the community, Long Island, I mean, we know that there's, you know, there's a lot of layoffs happening, there's people that are struggling with food insecurity, there's children that sometimes don't have meals to eat. And I just am scared that pushing, you know, beyond the 2%, I'm worried about our community. And I'm worried that it will impact some of the community that may not be able to, you know, not be able to handle that. So I am concerned about that, too.
Okay.
So I think I would prefer if you could stay at the 2.
No, that's fine, again, I'm just looking, you know, for, yeah, direct, I, I don't want to build or continue to build the budget incorrectly, so that's why I was just looking for direction.
That's just my own, my own personal feeling.
I understand, I understand the desire of the board, you know, and the concern for the community, you know. It's my responsibility to, along with Dr. Bossa, to, you know, build the budget to the best of our ability. Ultimately, the decision obviously is in the hands of the board. So it's just important that, you know, as James said, we're on the same page and we understand it, so.
Yes, I think I'm okay with that, the two, I don't know if we need to go under, but that's where I would like, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I don't, I personally would not like to go above 2%. As Dr. Siddiqui said, finances are difficult for a lot of people in our community. Inflation's at a record high, you know, we do have different pockets in our community, I don't think it would be fair. You know, I'd love to go under, if possible, a little bit. But, you know, I would like to see the business, coding, and civic seal, if possible. But I would not want to go above 2% at all. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm a definite not over 2%. I think I stated that last time. And, you know, there's a lot of things, my concern is not only about the financial of our community, you know, where the world is now, but also, you know, we got some funding, we have, and I, don't yell at me, Dr. Bossa, for bringing up the grant word, but those are gonna come, I know. So we have some monies now that are giving us some programs, and what, and, and some of them we want to continue past. And I'm just very concerned that if we don't really kind of manage things now, then it's going to be out of control. And I'm not saying that you're not managing, don't take that as a negative. It's just that we may not be able to have everything that we want, so we kind of have to prioritize, you know, what, what is going to be, what are we getting the biggest bang for the buck out of that? And with that, with the programming, I definitely think that the business and the coding electives are going to give us the biggest bang for the buck for our students. And the SEAL of Civic Readiness, I think, is a good, I think anything academically is going to push us forward. Now, Dr. Siddiqui talked about the collaborative partnership with Northwell Health and PM Pediatrics, which I, I mean, all these are wonderful, but I'm just wondering, is there some sort of, I'm asking the pediatrician in the group, is there some sort of grant that maybe, and I don't want you to answer, but I'm just like throwing that out there. Like, is there other, other creative ways that we can get the things that we need and want without just necessarily adding them to the budget? I guess that's kind of.
I understand, and we, we do always search and keep an eye out for additional grants.
I know you do, I know you do. I'm just voicing my opinion.
No, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
I obviously agree with the board, don't think we should be over 2%. If we could be under, wouldn't that be wonderful? With that being said, I just have a couple of quick questions from the presentation.
Sure.
Um, let me just go back, as far as the $350,000 for the building aid. When will we know the building aid? The project is closed, so we're just waiting for the state to give us.
They, they have to approve, like, our final cost reports. So I anticipate when the final, when the governor's final proposal comes out, that we will have those final building aid numbers.
Is there any projects in the hopper right now that we may be able to push to completion, to get the final cost reports, to receive additional building aid?
Not before June 30th, no.
Not before June 30th, okay. Um, as far as some of the enhancements I saw for the capital reserve, just a quick question, and you may not know the answer. Is there a cap on our capital reserve?
Is there a cap?
A cap, we can only put X amount of dollars into it, and then we're forced to spend it?
We can put, we can put no more than $500,000 a year into the capital reserve. And it is only the length or the time span of the reserve, I believe, was approved for 10 years.
So upon the 10-year mark, we must exhaust the funds that have been allocated to that?
I believe so, otherwise it has to be returned, I believe, to the general fund. I'm not, I can't get back to on that, I'm not 100% sure.
For me, the clock is ticking a little bit.
Yes, absolutely.
So I want to make sure that if we're going to continue to fund the capital reserve, that we're also using the capital reserves. We didn't make this capital reserve to keep it as a fund savings account. We specifically put it there to make sure we utilize the funds when capital needs came up.
Right, and that, that's a, yeah, sorry to interrupt you.
So as they're coming up, I just want to make sure that we're utilizing them properly, and we're not just squirreling it away, and then we're going to have to exhaust three at all at one time.
No, so it was created in 2018, and when funds were available, we did fund it. So again, we have $1.5 million. Had we funded it each of the years, we would have had probably $2.5 million instead of $1.5. But, you know, we're now five years in, and it, it, it is there, like you said, we, the, the district approved it, the community approved it, the board, you know, we have it as part of our financial, overall financial package. And so it's there, the money is there for us to spend. So when we can spend it on things that we truly need, especially security, something that we're looking to enhance that doesn't have an, an impact on the community members currently, I think it's a wise decision to spend that money.
Yeah, I think we've come to the time where there's capital projects and infrastructure needs and security enhancements that are not going to be able to be absorbed by the general budget, so.
Correct.
When in need, use it, and I think it's, you know, and once again, we're not making the individual decision to utilize that money. It goes to the community per referendum, and they get to vote on it to make sure it's something that they support.
Correct.
So I think it's a win-win on both ends. In the proposed budget for the reserves, you have a $25,000 allotment for that. Is that for?
$25,000.
$25,000 in reserves.
Sorry, I just got to go back to the slide.
Proposed revenue budget. Sorry.
Which slide are you looking at, James, sorry?
Oh, gosh, you want, I don't know.
The revenue or the expenditure?
Um, the revenue. Sorry, I should have just said that from the get-go.
Oh, the increase, I'm sorry, the increase is $25,000.
Correct, so what is the increase to, which reserve?
The ERS reserve.
Okay, so this is.
Right, so this, this initial slide does not speak to the additional reserves we're talking about.
Okay.
And if we, if the board approves the proposition to be added to the ballot, and the community approves it, that $500,000 won't be, it doesn't become part of the general fund, it still stays completely separate in the capital fund. Correct. So that, that $500,000 will not be part of this at all.
Okay, I just want to make sure that's clear, that it doesn't look like it's counterintuitive that we're spaying down our reserves and then replenishing our reserves. I want to make sure that it's understand that there's two separate pots here, in this case, it's ERS, but.
Right, we're looking to increase the allocation, so we're looking to spend another $25,000 out of the ERS reserve in next year's budget.
Thank you. And then to further about the security enhancements, a couple of things. I see it as in the capital, oh my God, I'm drawing a blank right now, our reserve, our capital reserve, thank you. Are we able to couple some of those projects together with the smart bond money? I saw the intercom system, I saw different things in there, and we still have the smart bond money. I know that we have to lay the money out prior to reimbursement from that, and that's scary, and that's money we're on the hook for, and I get it, and I, I'm assuming that's why we've been so apprehensive to spend it. We're finding the right project for it, but I feel like we're coming to a point where there are so many needs that we could tie that into.
Yes.
It would be nice to start chiseling away at that as well.
And, and we are, actually, Rose, the district treasurer who's here, her and I, this week actually, have been trying to connect with New York State. They don't have many people in the smart bond department. But we're starting to put together a new smart bond spending plan that has to be approved. So that, my understanding of that takes anywhere from three to six months. So we're, we're trying to work directly with the individual who would be in charge of Elwood's Smart Schools Bond Plan to get it on the books. So we're hoping, if we can get it in place before the budget vote, which is highly unlikely, then we could add, add that as both a revenue source and an expenditure. Otherwise, we will look to do it next year. And my understanding, Rose, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that we can fund a project from two separate funding sources. Right.
Okay, that's wonderful.
So we would be able to couple that with the capital reserve if needed.
That'd be great.
Yep.
And then my last question, Ms. Weiss, you can have the floor back if you need it. The 2% is at the $71,761. Obviously, we're short about $1 million, and that's where we're seeing our non-balance budget. With the $350,000 from projected building aid and the possible savings if we carve out certain things that are on the, the anticipated wish list above, if we do a little swap and we bring in the literacy and the civics, is this 2% going to account for the $350,000 if and when it comes? I know Tom asked the question, but I don't think I got, I know, I got, you might have got your answer, I still, I'm still confused.
Well, I guess I'm not understanding your question.
I, I am. So with the guidance from the board tonight, the delta between expenditures and revenue widened. With the direction that you gave us, there are items that need to now be added to the proposed expenditure side of the budget. So to close the gap between revenue and expenditures, we will have to more heavily rely upon our use of our reserves and appropriated fund balance. If we receive the additional $350,000 in building aid, the approximate delta reduces from $1 million to $650,000. But we still have to make up for that difference using those two revenue sources.
No, I don't know, I don't know why am I getting it, so I'm, I'm usually good at math, I promise. So the $1 million, the delta between that.
Yep, approximately a million.
Million, the $350,000 comes off if the aid is received, puts us at 650.
Correct.
We added some projects or, or want back in.
So back up to 700.
Right, back up to 700, right.
We're back to say seven, right? So that's seven, but the number, the 70, the 72, excuse me, the 72,727, that's at 2%.
Correct, so the, if we add, if we add the few programs that you, that the board is looking to, and let's just say the budget goes to 73 million.
Mm-hmm.
We then have to find a way to.
Stay at two, or.
Stay at two, right, right.
Or go above two. But my question is the $350,000, does that lower the overall amount? If we're getting that as revenue, that's being received, that's lowering our expense.
Right, so the revenue right now is at 71,7, so our revenue would go up to roughly 72 million. So, and as Dr. Bossa was explaining, it, it decreases the gap. So if we're, right now, we're at a million, and we, let's say we had $100,000 from the programs, so 1.1. If we get to 350 million, then we'll be at 760.
350,000, but yes.
Yes.
I would love 350 million. Sign me up.
Sorry.
Uh, no, okay, so, so it's, it becomes a numbers game on your behalf. And I think with the wish and the want of the board, you kind of heard where we're at.
Yes.
Um, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think anybody wants to be above two, that was clear. A little below two, I think Tom and I may be in there, Ms. Weiss might be there, Ms., Dr. Siddiqui, excuse me, wants to be at the two, so I think you have some numbers to play with. But I want to make sure you have your marching orders, that there's some things we want back in, and there's some things that we're going to have to figure out. And I know that's hard, how do you say, make more with less? And I know that's what you're thinking right now, but I want to make sure you've heard the board as far as your marching. But I don't want you to go back and say 2.1%, but, and I can give you everything, we don't want to be there, you know?
Yeah, so what, what I'm hearing, and I want to make sure that I have full clarity, so Ms. Dunkle and I can work collaboratively, is you want us to prioritize some of the items identified tonight, so we're adding expenses. But you would like to see a small decrease to our tax levy increase projection. So the guidance from the board tonight is to spend more of a charge less. So basically, the only way we're going to be able to accomplish that, and we want to be very clear, is to more heavily rely upon the use of appropriated fund balance and our reserves. That is the only solution to the challenge you faced us with, so.
I wouldn't say that's the only solution.
Well, the other solution is to reduce program, which I, I hope we're in agreement that we, we don't want to see reduction to program.
But the, the items, these five checkmarks, these are programs that are current, or these are recommended?
These are programs that were included in the proposed budget.
Correct, but they're recommended, they're not currently within the budget. So we wouldn't be reducing these five checkmarks, is that correct? The addition of a section of ICT.
Yeah, are there any of those checkmarks that the board is not supportive of? I think that's a very relevant question.
I think that's a good question, that's what I'm saying, because if we want to stay at the 2% or beneath it, we have to look at those five checkmarks that are recommended by the administration. And if we want to add two things that are not there, we have to, I don't want to give up two things, but we have to find in kind the dollar amount.
Sorry.
Fodals be flying.
Right, because it says include transfer to capital, but now we're talking about spending to capital, so.
Well, that.
Oh, that's inter-fund?
Yeah, that's part of the inter-fund transfer on Mrs. Scrola.
So the additional point fours, point twos, to make sure our electives are running, that, that is a minimal budget impact, but we want it to be transparent and talk about that addition. They're referring to the ICT model of teacher assistance is what we currently have, so there is no change in expenditure, it's just maintaining what exists. The additional special education staff for kindergarten and sixth grade is really to meet IEP requirements. So as much as I'd love to say to the board, what do you think? The reason why the green checkmarks are there is because these really are required items.
So really, the only two that we're looking at is the additional point four fax, but we need that because isn't that a statement? Did the students have to have?
This is the expansion of the electives that we've been focused on for some time now, yeah.
Okay.
And, and if you look at some of the other items that were on the not currently in the budget, you know, there are things that I think if, if money were not an object, we would support. But, but money is a concern. We do have a greater expense than we have revenue. We are already hesitantly recommending the depletion of our reserves, and we want to draw the line somewhere. And I, I started the conversation with the board with a mindset that I want to make sure we're in agreement on, because you're correct, Mr. Tommy, that it's not the only solution. The other solution is to reduce programs and staffing. I want to make sure that the mindset we are moving forward with is in concert with the board. I don't think we're at a critical point where we need to consider that option. I think we might be in the near future, and the conversations will be far more difficult about what to identify to reduce. I'm not going to use the G-word, but when those federal funds do sunset, it's going to be very difficult to absorb many of those initiatives and staffing into our budget. We know that. That's next year's challenge. What we do have this year is the opportunity to preserve our Program of Excellence that we currently offer our student, identify and add these enhancements that the board has helped us to prioritize, and move forward with the Program of Excellence. What is the cost? Further reliance upon our appropriated fund balance and the use of our reserves. We are dipping into our savings account.
Right, and, and just to piggyback on that, that, and we spoke about it earlier, that's not something that is sustainable.
Yeah, I think this board and boards previous to us are very aware and conscientious of how we have to multi-year budget. Right, we have to look out for today, tomorrow, and five years down the road. I think previous board and this board has done a really good job at making sure that we meet the mark and also understand our fiduciary responsibility and the needs of the community and what we can afford, essentially. We are at a crosspass here. We're, we're at the point where we definitely have to figure out where we're going to be cutting. And I don't want, I hate saying that, but I think we're at a point where we have to really take a pic, a holistic picture of next year's grants, I said it, I don't care about the G-word, it's coming.
Right.
It's, it's, you have debt looming, and you have programs leaving, and we don't have the funds to meet them. So I know it's a conversation, we do want to kick the can, I don't want to muddy the waters for this year's budget because it's a next year conversation.
Right, next year, and next year will be a difficult conversation.
But as good multi-year budgeters, it's a conversation we do have to consider. So I know, go ahead, no, go ahead.
And to your point, that is why you have not received a recommendation from the administration of everything that has been brought forward by every stakeholder and members of the team. There were many, many items on the administrative list and things that we have been prioritized by stakeholders that we're not recommending. We don't want to put ourselves in a position where we are slashing and burning in the future. I've had to use this expression with you in the past, and, and you'll hear it again next year. When it's time to make reductions, we will cut with a scalpel, not a chainsaw. And I'm hopeful that modifying the program as recommended puts us in a position next year where we will have to take out a scalpel and not a chainsaw to make appropriate adjustments to what we offer to our students.
I have one last question. There's a, an ocean. There's a notion out there, the community, that we're flush with cash, that we have millions left over. I don't know if anyone else has heard this conversation, but there's a conversation out there. Can you explain, are we in a position that we're flush with cash? Or are flush with money in our general fund? Or is there monies that we're not aware? I'm just.
No, we're, I would say that we're financially sound at this point. As you mentioned, the past, you know, five, six, seven years, we've been working on, you know, building up our financial stability. So I believe we're at a good point now. There, no, there are not millions of dollars of flush cash. We have our reserves, and we have them for a reason. You know, this $800,000 that, or $825,000 that we're allocating to the budget, if we didn't have that reserve, we couldn't use that money. So now we'd be in the hole another $825,000, similar to the 1.5 fund balance allocation. Without that, that's another million and a half. So that $2.3 million is where we deficit spend. So we keep those in our reserves and our fund balance specifically for this purpose. We've used reserves and fund balance allocation to assist in the revenue side of the budget consistently, year after year, for as long as I can remember. But it helps keep us balanced. Some years, we actually spend into some of those funds. Some years, we're able to curb spending and maybe not spend that. So we're able to, if we're allocating $800,000 out of the ERS reserves, some years, we're able to put back half of that and $400,000.
I was waiting for that answer, because that's what I want the community to hear. That, I think, is the misconception there is, yes, there's the monies that are allocated, but if we don't realize them, they go back into the coffers, per se. So then it looks like we didn't spend the money we asked the community for, but if we don't realize it, we anticipate, we budget to the best of our ability for funds that we expect to spend. But if something comes in under budget, you're left with a little bit of a surplus. So where they think possibly that we're flush with cash, maybe we're not, it's just that it's going back into the fund balance or into the reserves?
Yes, it's a, I'll call it like a revolving door, revolving circle of funds. We have a specific amount of money that we're able to allocate each year. And again, sometimes we spend into it, sometimes we don't. We've had years where our overall fund balance went, you know, from 7 million to 6 million. The next year, it may have gone from six back up to seven. But again, it's a revolving door, but without, without those reserves and without that fund balance allocation, we would not be able to build a budget. Again, we'd be at, our revenues would be at 68 million, and our expenses are 72 million. So that's why we have those funds. And this year, as, you know, again, it's not a recommendation I'm making lightly. I believe, you know, by making the decision to allocate additional funds and additional fund balance allocation, that we're not really hurting ourselves, but it does pause us in our tracks as far as, you know, building on our financial base, the sound base that we have. As long as we don't continue doing that year after year, we should be fine.
If I could just give one piece of additional insight to the board. I believe we have our marching orders. I think Ms. Dunkle and I have heard you clearly about the priorities that would you like us to see included in the spending plan, and where you want to see the tax levy proposal that we will build around. We've heard you clearly. With that number in mind, Ms. Dunkle has her outlet to other school business officials. I have communication regularly with other superintendents in our region. If we come in at or just below 2%, we will have one of the lower tax levy increase proposals in on the mound. We will likely be in the bottom quartile as far as the expense that we're asking the community to absorb. There are some districts, and there are a few, that will go out at about 5%. There are some that will come in below 1%. But Elwood coming in at just below 2% will make it one of the smaller increases that is being proposed to a community on the island. And I know that's important to residents, I know they do compare, and I think that that will weigh favorably for our fiscal management.
We're in a tough cycle. I mean, you got Newsday plastering that's the best, you know, year for funding. You have people who are going to compare our tax levies to the surrounding school districts. We have people who don't understand that we really could go to 2.3. That is our cap, 2% is not our cap.
Correct.
I don't, I can't speak for Mrs. Weiss or Mrs. Scroll, but my optics and my beliefs for being under 2% is because people are going to perceive that we went to the cap. And then we're going to, you know, that's what they're out there thinking, and I don't want that to be the case. Not that I'm afraid the budget will fail, but I think if you're 1.75, 1.8, 1.9, optically, eh, they're under 2%. Like, I feel like that is what the 2% tax cap has built into the subconscious and the mind of the voters. It's unfortunate, I understand the need for the 2%. I think it was designed to keep everybody at bay, but it's not 2%.
Well, again, the 2%, as I've spoken to in prior presentations, prior years, the 2% is a cap on one piece of the formula. There are six, seven pieces of the formula. So, you know, we can't go above that 2%. We always have the, well, we don't, excuse me, we don't have the option. There's always the option for any school district to pierce the cap, but that's not something Elwood is, we would ever, I would never propose, and I know it's not anything the board or the community would approve. But it is different. And again, just to go back to my slide, you know, our tax levy is 73% of our entire revenue. So we are very limited in our options as far as revenue is concerned. So it's important, and I know you all understand that, but, you know, when we're looking to increase the tax levy, it's usually because we have to.
I appreciate that slide. I think the pie chart was eye-opening. I would love to see a little sliver of commercial tax piece in there that we don't have. But it was very nice to see that we are heavily reliant on that, and it's three quarters of what our budget's made up of. It's very, you know.
It ties our hands quite a bit. That's, you know, again, we do always look for other revenue sources, but it's important that everyone understand that the majority of our revenue is coming directly from the taxpayers, and I know it's something we have to control.
Mr. President, can I ask another question based on what he said? Just proves I'm listening to you. Okay, when you go, James had mentioned about the capital reserve, and I think he mentioned something else. So when you go to do this referendum and you take out that 500,000, let's say it's approved, okay? If you go under, let's say these, and do you have to stick to exactly what the projects are on here?
Yeah, so, that, sorry to interrupt. No, so when we, when we make the final proposal, it will be more of a broad category, as Dr. Boss was mentioning, like security enhancements.
Okay.
And that, you know, we'll have a list of items that we're looking, you know, we're obtaining quotes, the things we're looking to use that money to spend on. But if we don't spend it, it has to go back to the capital reserve.
That's exactly what I was asking. Okay, and then if you go over, if your expenditures.
It's not an option.
Not an option. So then you have to cut something out, right?
Correct, yeah, if we have, say, two or three projects, we do one, we do another, and the next, the last project costs 150,000, we only have 100,000, we can't do it.
Okay, so you're not obligated to be, and that's probably because you're making that general umbrella.
Correct.
Okay, that's great. We talked about kind of like, I call it sharpening the pencil and going back. And I was looking at the estimated expenditure budget. You have general support. I'm not really sure I understand what's all under that. I see there's an increase of 328,000.
So general support is, the best way to call it is the umbrella of district office. That includes the administrative offices as well as our, like our nicer insurance, our liability insurance, other contractual obligations we have with BOSIs, our legal expenses. So anything that's not specific to a school, if that helps you understand it better, it's more of the district-wide or district office department.
I guess, you know, in looking at it, I'm just wondering if like, as like we do with our own personal budgets, if we go down, and is there wiggle room in some of these line items that maybe, you know, we reduce a little bit here, we reduce a little bit there?
I'm going to tell, my grandparents always say, can't the principals shave their budget? They do that many pencils, like.
I will tell you.
That's exactly.
We have a pretty tight budget as it is. As I'm sure you recall, a few years ago, you know, we had to make roughly a million dollar, a million dollar worth of cuts in our program. A lot of that was never added back in, you know, in lines and equipment and lines and materials and supplies. Some of them have been brought back slightly, but there's no real fluff in our budget anywhere. I mean, we can sharpen the pencil, but when I build a budget and I work with the principals, you know, I'm usually like the target of their anger because, you know, they have requests, and it's, usually it's, no, we start with a rollover budget, and there's not much to add to it, especially when, you know, when I build the revenue and see where we are, it becomes, okay, well, where can we sharpen the pencil? Like, you know, if we purchased something this year, we know we don't need that money next year, that may be something that we can, you know, limit.
Just asking, just to, you know, revisit, yeah.
Mrs. Weiss, it is something we look at on a daily basis. So where we can make those little reductions that do add up to a lot of money, we do.
Mrs. Weiss, one of the things that is a regular challenge in Elwood is we don't allow for a good deal of wiggle room, if any, within our budget proposal. And in other places I've worked that have some different revenue streams, there was always contingencies built into the budget. So if things were identified during the year, those wish list items came forward by the principals of our teachers, we were able to say, sure, let's do that. Let's investigate that program. Let's buy that technology piece of equipment that was identified. Let's hire that additional staff member. In Elwood, we often have to say no to those types of ideas and initiatives because we budget at our actual need. There is not, there is not padding or fluff built anywhere into the budget. And the only contingency allocations are for the things we actually anticipate needing. We build contingencies into the special education budget in case new members of our community move in, and we are legally required to provide them with services. We look at things like the inflated cost of healthcare and know that we're going to need some additional flexibility. But as far as our staffing allocations and our materials or supplies, our equipment, we budget for what our actual needs are, and that presents an ongoing challenge throughout the year.
So let's take something like transportation, okay? So our transportation is one of those fixed costs, right? There was transportation, there was debt services, and what was the third one? I forgot. Healthcare, okay. So the benefits are contractual, they're not going to change, but they do go up.
But the premiums got.
Correct.
Right, okay, so that's contractual. We're stuck with that, okay? The debt service, contractual, correct?
Yes.
That's it. The transportation, do we have in our contract? Are we contracted for a certain number of buses and a certain number of bus routes? Or do we reevaluate that such that if our need, and this is where I'm talking about the wiggle room and the sharpening of the pencil, and I know you're saying, you know, as you start the year, but, you know, you have a decrease in population. Do you have, you know, maybe you can shave, you know, a bus and make some other routes, some of the buses carry larger routes, you know? That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to, you know.
Our buses, and you asked a question specifically about transportation, so I'll give a specific answer. We run to the minute, and what, sometimes appearances can be deceiving. And I will receive calls from parents and community members about empty buses rolling. We have 10 full buses, and they're used for all four buildings' arrival and dismissal. So a bus that might be underutilized at the elementary level is used to capacity for the middle school. Mr. Tranquino has evaluated our transportation needs every year since I have come in. The board recently authorized us to do a transportation study, as you may recall. And if there are any flexibilities revealed within that study, we would love to decrease transportation. I don't think that's a reasonable expectation because we are to the minute, and we maximize. And our biggest problem with transportation right now is the severe increase to the cost and the lack of availability for buses for our after-school and field trip activities. Our transportation budget is probably less than it typically would be because we can't get buses for when we actually want them. Mrs. Weiss, I wish there was simple answers to the challenges we face. The truth of the matter is, I think we are very financially responsible. I think we are meticulous in our attention to detail in our expenses. That is the reason for the glowing reports we receive from the comptroller's office, our internal and external auditors. It's the reason why we are rated as fiscally sound as we are as a district. Our challenge is, how do we maintain that over a long period of time? And that is the challenge you have faced us with, and that's what we hope we're providing.
Any other questions? All right, in tall order, good luck with the marching orders.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Board, we have clear marching orders. Ms. Dunkle and I will meet tomorrow and make sure that we are beginning to take actions to match those marching orders so that at the meeting on 316, you will see them reflected in our next presentation. And we thank you for the clarity, we thank you for the guidance. We appreciate to be here at the very beginning of March, having a very clear vision of where we're going with our planning for next year. I think that's terrific. We're well ahead of the curve, and I think we'll land in a good place. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, that brings us up to our resident's remarks. Are any residents wishing to speak tonight? Ms. Mammalito, I will just, if you give me two seconds, Ms. Mammalito, you have to read my blurb, and then I'm going to speak to resident's remarks. First, I'll speak to resident's remarks, then I'll give you the procedural hearing. The Board of Education, we have had dialogue about resident's remarks and the policy and adhering to it. And there's been flexibility with coming to the microphone and having the three-minute allotment. And I tried my best to stop the clock, start the clock when Dr. Bossard speaks, to stop it. It's challenging, and the board has come to an idea, right, or a change in our practice to allow the speaker to get up, whomever that may be the resident, and have three minutes. No questions and dialogue back and forth, no Dr. Bossard chiming in or a board member responding to an inquiry. Have your three minutes, the full allotment. Mrs. Marks will keep track of the time and the clock, and she will give a 30-second kind of wave to let the residents know they have 30 seconds. So if you feel like you're long-winded, like I usually, you have a little remark to note to sit down and to finish up, excuse me. And then if we're able to answer the question, and it's appropriate at this time, we will. Or if we need Dr. Bossard or another administrator to chime in, we will. Or if it's a question that simply just needs a follow-up tomorrow, we'll inform the resident to reach out to the appropriate administrator. That way, we're not going back and forth. Did I catch everything, board?
You mentioned about the sitting down after the.
Yeah, sit down, then we'll address it if we need, because we don't want to have the back and forth. I had mentioned, you know, during COVID, it was a very stressful time. We had a lot of people's nerves, and we were able to kind of calm them down as they came. If we had the answer, we tried to provide the answer. It's allowed a lot of latitude and flexibility, and it's become hard to manage. And I want to apologize if I in any way didn't stop it in the exact second, or there was an overage. I don't want that to be the case. I don't want to be the gatekeeper and have any concerns that there's bias or a personal opinion. This board tries their hardest to sit here and allow the residents their opportunity to have their three minutes. We want to make sure that it's as clean as possible. So we're hoping that this change in practice will afford the residents and the board, the administrator, the opportunity to have and continue the collegial conversations that we've had. And there may be discourse, but, you know, Elwood's done a great job of having that discourse and not getting out of control. So we want to continue to have those cordial board meetings. So sorry, Ms. Mammalito, and now I'll give you my spiel. The board encourages all residents to attend its meeting, and this section of the agenda affords the opportunity to speak. Persons wishing to speak should identify themselves, state whether they are a resident of the Elwood School District and any organization they represent at the meeting. Comments related to district business or any item concerning matters which are not on the agenda will be taken under consideration and may be discontinued by the president. Public discussion of matters relating to staff, students, and others at which their reputations, privacy, or right to due process could be in some way violated is prohibited. I clearly just skipped this line. Comments related to district business or any item should be kept as brief as possible and may not exceed three minutes. Board Policy 1230. The floor is yours, Ms. Mammalito. Ms. Marks, if you could start the clock when she starts speaking. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Samantha Mammalito. I am a resident and a class of 2020 graduate. I am here tonight to advocate for kindness within our community. I always saw myself buying a house and raising a family here. Recently, I've become concerned because a loud minority feels it is acceptable to constantly complain, create divide, and spread bad, spread bad information about our school. They have even started targeting students' events from my class three years ago in the attempt to discredit and create a false narrative. Do you people have any shame? While I'm sure some might say that my mother sent me here, please know that, one, the comments brought forward by parents regarding the removal of books has me disturbed. And, two, she has no issue speaking the harsh truth and is a reason for being heavily criticized at times. For those that know me know that attending a board meeting is the last thing I would typically do. These issues cause me to feel the need to stand up for those that feel they have no voice. These books in question are not required reading and should be readily available on an age-appropriate basis so that kids have access for whatever reason. These books should never be placed in a psychologist's office because kids should not be made to feel they have mental health issues because they want to read the book. Parents should be more concerned about what your kids are seeing on. Parents should be more concerned about what your kids are seeing on Snapchat and TikTok. Just know that you may think your child's content is locked down, but chances are, they will still find a way to access it because kids are more tech-savvy than most adults. Also, the people who scream no censorship are the very same people asking the district to do just that. Fact, LGBTQ youth are four times as likely to commit suicide than their peers and at least one attempts suicide every 45 seconds. These youth are not born prone to suicide risk. They become high-risk because of how they are mistreated and stigmatized in society. Thankfully, I grew up in a household where we were taught to have open dialogue, embrace others, respecting differing opinions, give back, and be kind. Was it perfect? No. Did we make mistakes along the way? Of course, but we learned from those mistakes and became better people for that. While I cannot control the behavior of adults who get a rise off of creating divide, I can only ask the rest of us to come together and ignore the noise. I also ask those people to look within themselves and ask why. Why do you feel a need to come after people with differing opinions? Why is there always a conspiracy theory, an alternate agenda, a secret CIT movement, or be on a general mission to shake stuff up? Your disrespect, anonymous Facebook posts, and disruptions take away from every student and taxpayer in this community, and what is, that is what the public should be upset about. My family, fortunately and unfortunately, have learned to live under constant criticism because of my mother's role. I'm sure we will all continue to receive more based on my appearance today, but that is okay, because if I was able to positively impact one person.
30 seconds, Mrs. Mammalito.
Then I did my job. I hope that the next generation wants to do better than what we are currently seeing because the racist and homophobic tone is concerning. Please ask yourselves this: are you being the adult you want your child to become because all the children are watching? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mammalito. Are there any other residents wishing to speak tonight? You got three minutes.
Am I live?
You are.
Okay. You're under me, I can barely say hello unless I have three minutes. I don't have long remarks today.
Just have to address, address the community, let us know what your name, your name, a resident or non-resident, thank you.
This should not be part of my three minutes. I am Leonard Susskind, I am a member of the community. I have two students in the school district. I also have a wife who's not here, where I would like her three minutes appended onto the end of mine. But I just want to thank Ms. Mammalito for that. Say that this, we're in a library here. This is a sacred space for people who believe in books. We've had to talk about censorship last week, last month. I'm not going to rehash it again. I believe that it's our responsibility as parents to make everything available to our children that can be. I don't think we have the right as parents to control them. They're not our property. They're people, and they need to learn to be as such. With respect to the budget, I appreciate, I deeply appreciate the detailed presentation here. I'm concerned about the amount of strain that putting things like coding back into it might cause. Coding is a very fast-moving field. It's also a more, almost vocationally oriented than educationally oriented item. I'm concerned with how that would be vetted to make sure that it is giving people the ability to learn how to think the right way rather than teach specific detailed skills that might not still be relevant two, three, four, six years from now when these kids are moving into the job market. So, and that's just my thought there. I applaud the hard work being done with the budget, and I wish you all the best of luck. I'd also ask the board and the administration if we can give some clarity on to what the average dollar increase to a community member would be, going from 2% to 2.1 to 2.2? Because we see the urge to add more, and as Dr. Bossert said, spend less. That's a tough, long-term proposition. So wondering what that would really mean and if the community could absorb that. Thank you. I didn't use up all my time.
Thank you, Mr. Susskind. Any other residents wishing to speak tonight? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion, Mrs. Scrola, seconded by Dr. Siddiqui, all in favor, 4-0. Our next meeting is March 16th. We look forward to seeing everybody then. Thank you. Ms. Tom.